You guys ready to get rolling?
Sure.
Middle of the hour of 7:03, the former president called to order the planning board meeting of October 3, 2023. First item of business is approving the minutes of September 19, 2023. Has everyone had an opportunity to look at it? Will, have you had an opportunity to look at the minutes for September 19?
Still on there?
I have, you guys. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Sorry, I'm having trouble with the controls here.
That's okay.
So we have an unknown guest on the phone that we had to add in May, but...
It doesn't matter which role.
I'd like to make a small change to the minutes.
Go ahead, please.
The discussion of the proposed crosswalk. It was the discussion of the proposed crosswalk project, and I guess I was unclear. But the letter proposing... It was a letter proposing to Cedar Hill residents to add pedestrian-controlled flashing lights to the crosswalk. The existing crosswalk.
You guys okay with that?
Yeah.
All right.
And I have one more.
Yep, go ahead.
If you look under where it says... Oh, maybe I'm wrong. No, under minutes...
Yep.
It says, the second to last line, the line starts advisory hearing on July 27?
Yep.
Is that the September 27th one that we just had?
That's correct. All right.
I was going right through that one.
I think that's all I have for that.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve the planning board minutes of September 19, 2023 as amended?
So, a second.
Do I have a second?
Someone's...
Is there any other discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Will?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Chris is an aye. Good evening, Andy May. All right, well, we've already approved the minutes, so you've missed that. So this year, as we've done in the past few years, in December, there'll be no second meeting. So we're gonna meet on December 5. And unless something's presented that is time-sensitive, we'll do a quick zoomer. Other than that, we'll only have one meeting in December. Is that acceptable?
So December 5 will be the meeting?
December 5 will be meeting in here.
Okay.
Like we're doing on the first meeting?
Second one if we needed to.
If we needed to do a second for something that's time-sensitive. You guys okay with that?
Yes, but also November, the second Tuesday's election day, what are we gonna do there?
The Sunday Tuesday, the 21st?
Is there anything going on, or is that just...
The 21st? You mean the Thursday day?
Okay, wait one second. Is there any election at all? They're throwing a curveball over here. I'll find out. So that's November 21 is election day?
Yeah, but I don't know what that means. I mean, is there any town election happening?
I don't know.
Well, I just saw it marked on my calendar that way.
That's okay.
I don't know what's going on.
That's okay. I'll check it out, and if there's, I'll let you guys know. But...
Chris, one other related note that November 21 is the Tuesday before Thanksgiving.
I realize that.
Okay, so you're planning to just have a...
That's gonna be a zoomer, so if people are away and people can zoom in. So anyhow, back to December. Everyone's okay with having one meeting in December? They don't need to vote on it. Will, you're okay with that? That's a yes. Okay. Adesha Actions. Gino?
Yes.
So would you give the board a rundown on past actions since our last meeting?
Yes, since the last meeting, I checked with the attorney a couple more times, including today. I told him the planning board was meeting tonight and discussing next steps. And just shortly before the meeting, I got a response from him saying he was on vacation. But he would check again. That's it. So there's really been no progress since. He had told, the last time I checked with him, which was, I think, last week. He said he was checking directly with corporate headquarters, whereas previously, he had just checked with Jack Nash at the local facility. But he was gonna check with the corporate headquarters, but then nothing new since then.
So unfortunately, we're not meeting on the 17th because that's town meeting. So let's put this on our agenda for November 7. And what do you think our next action should be if we don't hear anything by November 7?
I think by this time now, we're talking about over three months late. We should maybe give them a warning that if they don't, if it doesn't arrive by the next meeting on November 7, the enforcement action will be taken, either a cease and desist order or a fine, a daily fine for every day they use the parking in violation of the special permit.
Okay, could you do me a favor, Gino? Could you just think about it and just maybe send an email to the board? And then what I'll do, because I'd like to discuss the actions and I'd like the board to talk about it. But before we do that, I'd like to talk to Jeremy and make sure that whatever we decide sort of jives with the selectmen's office.
Absolutely.
All right, does anyone have any questions? Will, do you have any questions about that?
Not for me.
No? You guys, you guys okay with that? So Gino will send a few suggestions. I'll run it by the town administrator. And if no action has been received by then, by our next meeting, then we'll decide on our next action. Okay? All right. In your packets, and I'll get Will's to him. I made a copy of zoning bylaw 4.9, which is the Affordable Housing bylaw. I don't want to talk about it tonight. I've highlighted certain things in it. And what I would like to do is I would like to have Will look at it and lead a discussion at our next meeting. Basically, do we want to stick with the 15% affordable? And this really has nothing to do with town meeting. It really has to do with... I thought it should have been 12 or 10. And at the time, Henry really wanted the 15. I gave in. And, but also payments in lieu of units. Do we want to include that for multifamily? I'm not saying I feel one way or another, but I think that's a good discussion for this board to have. And if the board feels that we should work on it, then we can move forward and have a future discussion and maybe a warrant article in the spring. Will, would you be willing to take that on and maybe if you have any questions, work with Addie May? I'm gonna take the yes, Will. He's not saying anything. Can you hear me, Will? Okay, good. Addie May, do you think that's a fair discussion to have?
Yes, I think that's a good discussion to have. We had a lot of discussion at the time, and because we revisited some of that discussion, I think, you know, we've learned a lot in the interim.
Yeah, I, you know, again, I don't want to talk about it tonight. But Rob, do you have any questions about that? I made highlights for things that I would really like to you guys to focus on. And basically, all I want to do is continue the discussion. But if we decided something we want to change, I want to do it soon enough that we can get it for the spring. Everyone's fair? Everyone's good with that? All right, next thing. Addie, would you be willing to put together a few slides on Article 4 for town meeting?
Sure. What's Article 4?
Article 4 is Coolidge Street.
Oh, the warrant article?
Yes.
Okay.
And I'll be there to fill things with you, but if you can put together, because that's kind of your thing anyhow. And...
Chris, so total sideways note, relatively irrelevant, but I met the mayor of Framingham at a farmer's market recently, and I said to him, "Oh, Framingham, yes." I said, you know, I'm associate member of the county court, and he was, "Oh, are you so excited about..." So we are very excited about, you know, the collaboration for the sewer. And he was like, "This is gonna be so great." He was super positive about it.
Yeah, he was actually...
Yeah, it's good.
This is a little bit of a side note, you know, side note. He was actually very, very good friends with my father-in-law.
Oh.
And I'm not gonna use that unless I have to.
Well, it was nice to hear him express how much he thought the other members...
Okay, so we're gonna, we're gonna talk about 4.9. And there doesn't have to be a lot of preparation, Will. Let's just set aside 20 minutes or half an hour and talk about the pluses and the minuses and what direction we think the board wants to go. We're not gonna make any decisions, just the decision, do we want to move forward with it? All right, we have before us an A and R for 20 North Main Street. As you know, the purposes of an A and R is, well, one of the main purposes is proper recording of the land, tax assessment, and things like that. In the past, we talk a lot about frontage and things like that. If you're looking at a buildable lot, again, the question is, is it a subdivision or is it not a subdivision? This is clearly not a buildable lot. It fulfills all our, all the obligations for endorsement. And that's it. Gino, do you have anything to add? I've looked at it, and Gino's looked at it independently. Gino, do you have anything to add?
No, it doesn't meet all our requirements, yes.
The only thing I would like to do is, I'm gonna make a motion. And Gino, remember I asked you if it was written on the plan?
Yes.
It was written on the plan. On the plan, under notes, Note 9 states that law A2 is not to be considered a separate buildable lot. So that was, that was one thing I wanted to see on it. You know, nobody's playing a game here. But I think in the past, we've used certain words to protect potential buyers, and I think we have to be consistent with that. So do I have a motion to endorse the A and R? Or actually, before I do that, I should ask. Does, Will, because you're not here and we don't have an electronic copy, I'm gonna ask you not to vote on this, if that's okay. But you still get to ask a question. But it's hard because you can't see. Do you have any questions about the A and R for 20 North Main?
No questions.
Gino had requested an electronic copy, and we didn't get it. Addie, do you have any questions?
No, it's pretty favorable. We can open it.
Yep, Frank?
I'm good.
Okay. Do I have a motion to endorse the A and R for 20 North Main Street with the wording in the minutes, "For the purposes of the subdivision control law, parcel A2 cannot be used as a site for a building"?
Can you say that again?
"For the purposes of the subdivision control law, parcel A2 cannot be used as the site for a building." And the reason I want that in there is because every other time, there's been a little piece peeled off. We put it in there, and so just to be consistent, I think it's important to have the minutes reflect that. Do I have something to make...
Second.
Second, is there any other discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Addie?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Rob?
Aye.
And Chris is an aye.
I'll understand.
And yes. Okay. In the next week, we have to prepare comments for Brushell Road. Gino and I, Thursday, we're gonna write a letter to the select board. I typically don't do this. I have a list of objections, and I'm just gonna read them, and then Gino and I will put it to letter form if that's okay with the board. Again, I think it's a terrible location for a 40B. It's not like it's in the downtown. And I've never spoken against a 40B project because we're at what, 3.4%? We got a long way to go, so it's hard for us to be shooting down projects. I just think this is a bad location for a project. I also feel that, you know, that piece of land couldn't even pass our local Board of Health regs for a single house. And now we're putting in a bunch of houses. And I feel that it carries with it a high risk to the health and safety of budding properties.
This is a Brushell project. I'm sorry, I misspeaked.
Correct. And then I'm gonna talk about things that the town has been doing, like the Coolidge Street project. I mean, and we're working as hard as we can. It doesn't mean that every parcel that comes before us, if it's marginal land, we have to embrace. So Addie May, did you want to add anything? Just thoughts that you want me to include in the letter? Gino and I are gonna work on it on Thursday.
I think you kind of hit the nail on the head in the fact that it's not acceptable for one single family house. And it's not like the, some other situations you encounter, we're looking at infrastructure. This is, again, trying to utilize private, well, in private subjects, so why? And it's a narrow road, narrow access, and it's behind, it's in, the access is... We wouldn't even allow it. It's an older approved lot. It wouldn't be approved nowadays under a regular house.
Okay, well, if in the meantime, between now and Thursday, you have anything else you want me to put into the letter, email it to Gino. Frank, do you have anything else you'd like me to say? Let me say, is anyone like, "Oh, you shouldn't be so..." We want you to go ahead. I mean, what are your thoughts? I'm gonna be a pretty strong no with this.
I mean, the only thought I had is that Union Street Architecture, the architecture firm, if you were looking at the design of the neighborhood, if it was, it's the location. It's a lovely little design. It's exactly what we say we want, cluster, you know, pocket communities. And the problem is the land that it's being supposed to be put on.
My personal concerns are the amount of effluent and the amount of water that they're gonna be drawing and that effect on the letters. That's my... You're right. I looked at the plans. They look lovely.
But this is a planning board issue or a health issue?
It can be both. Anything else you'd like to add?
No, I guess I'm not familiar enough with the plans, but...
All right, do you want some? I don't have it. I'll get it to you, and if you can, I'll get it to you upstairs, so if there's something you want to add. All right.
They're right on the development page, okay.
Yep, okay. The next item, the 3.4 stuff, again, I'm just, that's just a placeholder. Nothing will be done until we hear about litigation. Let's talk about 3A. What I'd like to do is a couple things. Number one, I'd like to go through the bylaw quickly. There's some changes that Gino has made. Well, not Gino. I'm not giving you all the credit. Gino and I made. And then, and looking at it again, there's a few more things. Then what I would like to do is, I would like to vote on this, not to accept it as the final draft, but just basically vote on the wording that we've come up with. We have a $30,000 grant that was given to us back in June, and we can use it for anything housing. I do not want to give, I spoke to Larrish Sneed. Gino, did you see, did I see you in that email?
Yeah.
Okay, so they're willing to help us with it? And I don't wanna, I mean, I would like to hold a lot of that money, and you can use that for other things toward housing, and we can work with Gino. But Gino, we have two years to spend it?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm gonna ask... Oh, Len, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Len?
I cannot hear.
What?
He said, "I can't hear."
Say that again. We couldn't hear you.
Go ahead and be honest.
I cannot hear you.
You can't hear us.
You can't hear us?
You know, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear.
Something is cutting off communication. I cannot hear you. I cannot, I cannot, I can see you, but I cannot speak to you. Cannot hear you.
You may want to log out and log back in again?
Turn up the volume on this device.
Yeah, try to turn up the volume on your device.
Are you on the phone or are you...
I'm getting echo, some sort of strange echoes coming in rather than sound. If this is happening to everybody else on Zoom, this is a problem.
No, it's not. You're the only one. Will and Gino are, we just fine hearing this.
Yeah, this is Tom Trainer. The audio's fine. Leonard, do you have a second device logged in or just this one?
I can't hear. I'm getting, I'm getting garbled. That's all I'm getting. I'll try again. I'll reload.
Okay, thank you.
Who's on? Who's on, Frank?
So Tom Trainer. Tom Trainer.
Yeah.
Len was on, Gino, Will. Town hall meeting is listed as one of them, and then there's a guest. And then there's a guest.
I don't like this. Okay, so back to our $30,000. I'm gonna ask you...
It just says guest on the, I just need to record what it says.
617...
Oh, is that an unidentified person by phone?
Yeah, and last two, four, three registered, nine thirty.
Let's, I'm sorry.
I have to record who's on, and I can't see, so...
I know. So we have this $30,000 grant, and Gino, my question back to you is we have two years to spend it, correct?
That's correct.
And we can use it for what?
Promoting housing in Sherbrooke.
Okay, so what I would like to do is I'd like to see if Goldson and Company can work with us on some things. What I would really like them to do is put together a presentation for our hearing.
I'll look 3A in, Frank?
Yes. And, but I just, we've been going back and forth. So they just responded back like yesterday or this morning and said that they would be happy to work with us. And my intention is not to, you know, to spend as little as the $30,000 and get the job done. So what I would like to do is I'd like to schedule after we go over the bylaw tonight. Again, I was thinking of scheduling our first hearing for February 6 at 7:45, at 7:15. Is that okay with the board? And that way, I can give them sort of the heads up on, because, you know, we're gonna run out of time, believe it or not. It seems early, but, you know, we're gonna have to, there's a lot that's gonna, we're gonna have to do a lot of explaining with this. But I think if we get Goldson and Company to help and then give a little presentation about, you know, the importance of getting this thing passed and answering questions. Does that seem reasonable to you, Gino?
When do they usually close the warrant? That's usually until end of February, right? Like, we need to have a hearing before they close the warrant.
Correct.
So we're...
I'm gonna confirm all these dates. I'm not even worried about that. I'm just looking at, I don't want to do it... Number one, I want to do it in person. I don't want to do it on Zoom because I want them to come in, and I don't want to do it the first meeting in January because I want everyone to enjoy the holidays. So that's how I picked, February 6. That's all. And does that seem reasonable, Gino?
It does.
Okay, all right, so let's, does everyone have a copy of the newest and the updated? So anything that we've changed has a strikeout? So I'm gonna start with, under purpose, that word typologies. To encourage the production of various housing sizes and typologies. Gino, what would be a better word than that? Types? Housing types?
Okay, John?
Yeah, types is probably good.
Okay. You guys okay with changing typology to types? Gino, the edits, are you gonna handle them?
Sure.
Okay, so you guys okay with changing typology? It just sounds like it's too nerdy. Under 573, under affordable housing, it says housing that contains affordable units as defined by Section 5.7. We should, you know, that's like saying as defined by how we're defining it. Do we want to say as defined by, you know, the state, blah, blah, blah? Gino, what do you think about that? What do you think leaving it?
And if you leave it at 573, it should be of our bylaws, it shouldn't be by law.
Which should be added. Affordable.
Because, because then if you look at 21, under subsidized housing inventory, it's referencing Master M law's chapter 40B, blah, blah. I mean, should, should this be referencing?
Point two, we're going back to that, the Affordable Housing. I think the reason to keep it referencing the entire section is because Affordable Housing kind of has so many different components. So there isn't really a one straight catch-all definition. It encompasses all the different, you know, what's an affordable unit, who's an applicant, all of that kind of makeup.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna take your advice. I mean, I'm just looking at it saying, all right, I'm just looking at this and comparing it to 21 and making sure that it...
It's consistent.
Yes. Gino, what are your thoughts? Leave it?
I think it's okay, but if we want to be consistent, I suppose we could make it, make the reference to the state law.
Would you, would you, what do you think should be added? I mean, I don't want to make it complicated.
Just the state law, I don't ever change it. This way it's...
Okay, so you guys okay with leaving it alone?
I think it is circular referencing, but it's, I understand Addie May's point that it makes it a little hard to read because you're thinking, okay, the definition is the entire document essentially.
Correct.
So I do think it's confusing, but I'm not, I'm not sure what the state definition is and if that would work.
Okay, so you want to leave that alone? I mean, that's not a make or break. I'm just trying to...
I don't know. Now that I'm looking at it more carefully, I mean, it's like, you define affordable unit, and right then, after that, you can say affordable housing, everything that contains affordable units. You run up with a period right there, and it would be fine, right? I mean...
That's why I'm asking. I'm just trying to...
Or you could say as defined above. I don't know. I wasn't quite sure what that, if it, I wasn't quite sure whether it meant there was an expanded definition elsewhere, but I think it's just as defined by the previous sentence, right? Is that the intent?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it sort of does it above too with the MOD definition. You know, which is more explicit because this is the...
All right, all right, Gino, I'm looking for wisdom. What do you think we should do with that? You want to just leave it?
I think just leave it. Because then it ties it to our own Affordable Housing bylaw.
Okay, that's fine. At the top of the next page, I would like where it says review or special permit. I'd like that to be on page one because I hate when like two words from a previous paragraph end up, they kind of get lost. Can we do that, Gino?
Easily.
So the other thing is EOHLC. We put the definition in here, even though that abbreviation is used two other places. I'd rather just get that out of the definitions and just put Executive Office of Housing in Livable Communities. Because...
Where it first appears?
Yeah, it only appears in a couple places, and then if someone doesn't know, they're gonna be EOHLC. Like, what's that? Then they're gonna have to go back and reference. It's only in two places. So if we just spell it out, then we don't need it in the definitions, correct?
The only other thought there was to put in, maybe it's wrong or not, but I hate, is to leave it, to keep the definition, but put a reference to see formerly E H D D, just because anybody looking at old...
I, I, I think that's a great idea. Gino, what do you think?
Yeah, great idea.
Okay, then we'll leave it in, and then we'll reference that because that's what people, I look at this and I'm like, huh? Every time I read it, it confuses me.
I'm just reading what I'm talking about.
Okay, so we'll, we'll add that. Again...
I'm going through the holders and then coming back and going, so what others, or you just want to...
I'm going, I'm blasting right through because we're gonna still change this some more.
I'm just saying, I got some things too. So are you going by page, or are you gonna come back and then...
Nope, nope, go ahead, Frank.
So I just had a question on 12 and one on 17. So 12 is on that same page, that page two is multifamily housing. And this is a building with three or more residential dwellings. So that's the definition of it. But do we want that to be the definition? Do we really want to have housing in this?
That's a something definition, isn't it, Gino?
Yeah, that's, that's, that's the 3A definition. We have to go with that.
And then on 17, section 3A, you cross out the zoning act. So is there any other title for the 3A and?
We add a chapter 40A of the Master General Laws. So we scratch that and then we add a sentence.
That was Mary and Tidosh's last thought.
Correct. Okay, all right. Top of page three, where it says development standards. This is a problem I had with the previous page. If we could stick that on page two. Because again, when there's like two words, it's like weird. So under 21, oh, this is qualified, qualified affordable housing units maintained by, and there's that thing. I'd like to spell that out, if that's okay with the board. Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. Because it just, if not, you look at it and you're like, what's this? Is that okay, Gino?
Sure.
Okay. Under permitted uses B, I think, I think we have to delineate where are we gonna want mixed use? Like I, I look at Kendall Street, I don't think that's, that's a good place for mixed use. When I was thinking mixed use, I was thinking of limiting it to the downtown. So I, I would like to, under B, I'd like to add that language.
In business district areas or, or areas known for business or?
However, Gino thinks it would be best added, but I think we have to be clear with it here. You know, I read it like 10 times trying to find a place where it should go. What are your thoughts, Gino?
Well, we defined two sub-districts. One was called the Town Center Sub-District and the other was called Kendall Avenue Sub-District. So I think we should just say in the town, mixed-use development in the Town Center Sub-District only.
Perfect.
But do you all think that a place like Kendall would be appropriate for a few of these? Like, I think that what you're talking about is sort of businesses.
Correct.
But a community space or educational use or artist studio, are those, you know, an office, someplace that's not highly trafficked with people coming in and out, but would, you know, there's, there's a little more space over on Kendall. So if someone wanted to create something that had sort of a multi-function room that could be rented for different town organizations that might benefit us without the, I think what you're talking about, which is like a.
I'm thinking, I'm thinking, I'm thinking, I'm thinking business.
Right.
But that's a good point because you're also gonna have that Cooley Street Development happening, similar law.
Yeah, but.
So, and there's already the sunshine and there's already something kind of, kind of over in that area.
We could add a provision of without permission or something so that we could allow it. But, but have discussion sort of.
Well, if a zoning project under 3A comes forward, who's the review board? Is it planning or is it zoning? Planning.
We would be reviewing it.
So. So we would have the ability to say.
Maybe we don't wanna limit it here in our bylaw. Maybe we do wanna leave it open for, you know, see what comes forward.
What do you think, Gino, about that?
I mean, I, it could go either way. I mean, like, as, as was pointed out, there is already sunshine dairy, so there is like commercial use across the street. So I don't know, it's kind of a policy decision, whatever the board, however the board wants to go. But you know what? Maybe, I have a thought going back to the Town Center portion, which might have some impact on this one too, that, that might provide a solution. I was thinking of adding a item C under this one, permitted users one. And, and the item C would say something like newer expanded buildings with frontage on North Main Street. For newer expanded building with frontage on North Main Street, residential uses on the first floor are allowed only by special permit. In other words, that would be like a mandatory mixed use for the Town Center District.
I would, I would like to see that. I think for the center, that makes sense to me. What does the board think? Rob?
Where's that language going to be intended?
He's, he's gonna add a C. So this is B and it would be added right here.
By seven four. One C.
I think that's, you know, sounds good and like, any zoning, if we find there's an unintended issue, we'll deal with it then, but no, it seems to be.
Well, okay, but that, I mean, it contradicts B where it says any floor residential.
Just the bottom of that table, cross on any floor.
No, but that contrasts with ground floor. Ground floor has the, the commercial uses. And residential would be allowed. That, that goes back to, that, that's a good point because that goes back to the very controversial and source of much, much discussion at the state level about mandatory mixed use because many towns wanted to have a provision for mandatory mixed use. And that, that's not in the legislation and HLC came up with a kind of a workaround for that. And that workaround is that you can have mandatory mixed use, but the land area would not, it, it doesn't, this part wouldn't apply to Sherbrooke because we don't have a minimum land area. But the towns that do, you know, it's 50 acres is the minimum. The, the mandatory mixed use area would not count towards that, that minimum area and the, the units that could be, that would be zoned for would, would count off, off the total. Off the total that's, that's, that's required. So with a limit, I think it can count up to 25% of the, of the required part. So so if we put it, put this in, our area already has, you know, many more than, our zoning would already allow for many more than the 78 units were required to zone for. In fact, Kendall alone could, could do that or Town Center alone could do that. So so we could easily have a required mixed use provision in here. And that's kind of, that's kind of why I, I, I figured that North Main Street is the place where we, we wouldn't wanna see, for example, some of the businesses that are there get wiped out and replaced with just housing, which is what would be allowed if we didn't have that, this provision. And how, housing where it's in such demand, that could very well be the result. So anyway, that, that was my thought. But, but where I was going with it back to Kendall is we could kind of flip it the other way on Kendall and say something like ground floor commercial is only allowed by special permit.
I would like, I would like to see that. I would like the board to have some control over it.
Yeah.
So Gino, on Thursday, we can work on that wording?
Yeah.
Okay. Is everyone okay with that?
I guess, I'm, I'm a little just nitpicking, but the experiential, I don't know what that means. And we have some things that I guess are sort of examples.
Physical therapy or something like that, or like yoga?
Well, it seems to me that it's kind of like, when you have the word retail alone, to me that kind of implies selling things and personal services. To me, that's like retail services. So this experiential, it seems to be sort of like retail services. It's photography, dance, exercise, maybe if I, you know, maybe if I wanted to put in a an exercise place, a spin studio or something that would fall under that. It's, I don't know. I'm, I'm not sure what it's even trying to say, you know? What does that word experiential mean?
Yeah, so, so Gino.
Gino didn't come up with that. That came from.
That came from the consultant. Yeah, maybe just, just cross out experiential.
Well, I would also just cross, I would, I would just cross out retail too and just say retail, including retail associated with, right? So the line above it, we can get rid of retail and just make the, the bigger block retail, including retail associated with dancer exercise.
Yes.
Does that make sense?
Or you could, the line above it could be like retail sort of meaning retail stores and this is like retail services. I, I don't know.
Yeah, but you could just say retail, including retail associated with. Is that okay, Gino?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're gonna scratch that and we're gonna scratch, I agree, it's, it's weird.
And, and it's, should be, I guess it's kind of clear. Says retail associated with dancer exercise studios, music studios, photography studios or other combinations of education services and retail. I would interpret that as those specific things you mentioned, dance, exercise studios, music studios. Those are just examples and you can do something that is similar, but not in that list.
Yeah, but you're not gonna list everything either, right?
No, but you know, you just wanna make, you know, or, you know.
Okay.
I don't think other or similar, I guess. Yeah, whatever. Okay, I, I guess it's reasonable to interpret it that way.
Okay.
Do we want to have restaurant, cafe, another eating establishment in the business district when we have already?
Yes.
With well and silver?
Yeah, but this is zoning. That has nothing to do with infrastructure. So I, 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 I think that should be in there.
Yeah.
Okay, is everyone okay with page three? As of now, this is, this is gonna be a work in progress.
Oh, Chris, just going back a little bit, I was just combing through the zoning bylaws to see where we mentioned affordable housing. And it's referencing in 5.6.8, in addition, in, in zoning bylaws, it references a state law. It says, selects housing, affordable housing operate on a basis of substantial similarity with the local initiative program is defined in 760 CMR 45.
Well, that's what I was thinking. You're talking.
That's the one you were talking about. I'm going back to the 57 comment from before. Sorry.
Yeah, no, no, that's okay. Yeah, but that's, that's what I meant.
And this 57 is gonna go right in here following in, in the zoning bylaws, correct?
Yep.
So there will be some inconsistency once it goes in because we're sort of referencing one definition in the prior section 5.6.
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna have to change that.
Okay.
But that's what I was talking about, but the board.
I think that's fine to change that instead of change this. It's just something to think about.
Yeah, no, I made notes that we're gonna have to change things to.
Okay, sorry to circle back.
That's okay.
Oh, before we get off page three, one other thing. Item A, multifamily housing up to 15 units an acre. There's an issue with that in that the 15 units an acre refers to gross density for the entire district, not density on individual parcels or lots. So that may need to be tweaked a little bit. We have to go back to the compliance model that was used to determine whether our district met the requirements. So it might be a little higher than 15 to get a gross density of 15 because the street area and, and such is included in the district.
Okay, well, I'm gonna get to that. It's a good point, but I'm gonna get to that at the end.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Page four. Everyone's okay with page four? I don't think we made any changes there. Did we, Gino?
The only thing we did was remove the word yard. So it just says front setback, side setback, rear setback.
Yeah, so before it said yards, um, front yard and it said side yard, but I, I wanted to make it consistent with our other bylaws. And so, Gino, we, we just struck that. We took yard out.
So I don't know, it's just a point of clarification, we need to have it for stories. It says an maximum 2.5.
Yep.
Should that be excluding basement or does basement not, is not included in stories?
It's not usually.
Yeah, no, not usually.
And also the fee would probably then be above ground fee?
Yeah, we have a very specific definition on how to measure that.
I'm sorry?
We have a very specific definition on how to measure that already in the bylaw, the overall, sort of bylaw.
And then if you go in the bottom table where it says use multifamily mixed use, it says see section 240-51. Should it just be 5.1? Isn't that our zoning law? We don't have a 240 dash. We just have a 5.1, right?
Wait, where is that?
Bottom of page four.
Mixed use, the, the underneath minimum space, it says some of uses computed separately see section 240-51 of the zoning bylaw.
Yeah, yeah. I, I think section 240 might be what it's going to be in the new general code re, renumbering of our bylaw, but, but they'll, they'll fix that. We should take that out so it's not confusing. Just say 5.1.
Non-residential slash commercial. Isn't mixed use a mix of residential and commercial? I don't understand what that's trying to convey.
It's just referring to number of parking spaces. It's just, it's just about parking spaces. That mixed use has different parking space requirements than residential.
Yeah.
So you have to do it some for the multifamily part and then some for the mixed use part depending on the bylaw.
Right, it's just that, to me, putting non-residential, commercial there makes no sense. It's, mixed use is residential and commercial.
So you want, you wanna scratch non-residential, commercial?
Just call it mixed use. We've already defined what mixed use is, right?
You okay with that, Gino? I think it makes sense.
It makes sense.
Okay.
They didn't follow it right for now.
Yep. All right, page five. Everyone's okay with page five?
F for lighting. So is there a way of putting something in there that they would use energy efficient LED lighting like what we've done in other parts of our town?
Gino?
Yeah.
Let me think. We could probably put that in. In.
Energy efficient wording.
On the types of lighting that changed our town.
Yeah, I think that would be okay. We, we can't put in zoning anything that the building code addresses, but I don't think the building code addresses types of lighting. So, so I think we're probably okay.
Okay, so you'll, you'll add something in? Obviously, we're not gonna vote on this tonight. We're gonna, we're gonna clean it up and we'll look at it at our next meeting. So all right. Page six. There were no changes to page six. Does anyone have any? Oh, there was one change. Page six, item five, C, where it says materials for non-residential uses should be stored inside and it used to say or undercover and shall we'll scratch or undercover. I'd rather everything be out of sight and not have a tarp on the back of the stuff. You guys okay with that?
I had a couple of things under this. I don't know.
That's okay. I got one more thing.
All right.
Um, we had a question under item six. Such space may be any combination of the, remember it was ground floor, courtyard. And so I'm gonna say let's strike ground floor, any combination of the courtyard, rooftop, terrace as shared open spaces. Does that make more sense? Rob, you okay with that? All right, Will, speak up. Will, you're awfully quiet in your state. All right. You guys are okay with? Alright, you guys are okay with page six?
No, I have two things.
Okay, go ahead.
It's important. Uh, four C and five B.
Okay, four C, yeah.
We, should we, should we add that it should be A D A compliant, is that any words?
I think, I think, I think that has to happen either way, but, Gino, what do you think?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's already required, so we, we don't have to specify it.
Did you ask a question?
No, it was, it was just.
I, I, I was actually looking back at page five.
Um. Yeah, cool, I was trying to move forward, yeah.
You may wanna just dismiss this, uh, but. Two H dumpsters that say they shall be screened by a combination of fencing and plantings. And then you say, when possible, they should be located within the building. I don't know, like, that's, that's pretty stringent, I mean, when possible, it's always possible, you. You know, you take some space in the building and make people put their dumpsters inside, that, 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 I, I don't know, that seems overly stringent.
Um, so what do you think we should say?
I don't know, I, I guess, I might. I would consider saying something like, outdoor dumpsters shall be screened by a combination of fencing and plantings, and. Um, I don't know, you might put in something a little bit more generic about. You know.
Well, actually, I think we're, I think actually you're making a good point, if you, you say outdoor dumpsters shall be screened. And then, then you don't even need to say where possible dumpster, another trash should be located, and then, cause it's understood, if it's outside, it has to be screened.
kidding.
I mean, unless you.
And you just might say, I don't know, something about. They, they shall be located such that they do not provide, you know, a, a health hazard or.
Wraps.
Unsightly. You know, not unsightly and do not provide a health hazard, something very generic like this, so that we could still review it and prove it or not.
What are your thoughts, Gino?
Um. Yeah, um. I don't know, um, definitely screened outside, and as Eddie May said, if it's inside. Then not really our concern. It would be hidden.
Yeah, but it's saying they would prefer them to be inside, I mean, if you want it to look nice.
Yeah.
Do you want trash in your building?
Yeah, uh. I mean, we could soften it, I suppose, and say, um. It's encouraged, we encourage them to be, it's, but there's no point in saying we encourage, cause then it's not required. Neither is where possible, like, like Rob said, it's always possible, you just have to, uh, design it that way. So, yeah, maybe just put outdoor dumpsters shall be screened by fencing and plantings.
I think that makes sense. It must be asked nice, put that in there. Alright, so you guys okay with that?
Yep.
This is gonna be changed ten times down in the spring, um, okay. Alright, so now we're on to page six. Uh, nope, I haven't finished on page six, oh, no, ground floor, we did that, okay. Now we're on to seven. Um, so under item eight. Adjacent, if the, if, it said if the, we struck out the, so adjacent buildings comply with. The minimum front setbacks, we got rid of yard, and we got rid of our setback at a distance that exceeds. Um, we got rid of that, um, shall meet the requirements as well. And got rid of, of section blah blah, we're not, we don't have to reference it, they just have to comply. Um. Any discussion about that? Does that make sense to everyone? Does that make sense?
Well, I. I'm not sure I'm understanding, I mean, doesn't, doesn't every building have to meet the minimum front setback?
It said that infill buildings, buildings that are being added, they are in line with empty buildings.
A beautiful drawing. So in other words, if. So the infill building would be the only minimum. That's what we're talking.
So you're saying if there's existing buildings that do not meet the setbacks, you can match their setbacks, okay.
That makes sense to me.
In other words, if it's in the downtown, all of a sudden, and there's a building here, building here, they put one in, they're not gonna have to do that, okay?
That's not reading.
Yep, so you guys okay with that? Alright, um, under five, seven, eight. Under purpose, promote public health, safety and welfare by encouraging housing opportunities for people of different income levels. I'd like to strike a diversity of, that word just gives me the heebie jeebies. You guys okay with striking that?
Oh, in, in A?
Yes, in other words, promote public health, safety and welfare by encouraging. Housing opportunities for people of different income levels, not a diversity of housing opportunities.
Yeah, I think it's fair on that.
I, I just, that diversity thing, it gives me the loose.
Well, I, I think that they're talking about diversity of housing as opposed to a diversity of income levels of our people, but.
Yeah, I just.
I think it says the same thing with, with other word diversity.
And then, line D, work to overcome economic blah blah, I'd like to strike that whole D. Okay, you guys okay with that? It, it's basically repeating the stuff that says above it.
Before you go on.
Okay, go ahead, Frank.
Just real, real quick, uh, on number nine, initial, uh, section where it says building, principal facade and parking.
Yep.
Since parking shall be subordinate in design and location to the principal building facade. I'm suggesting we add something like while prioritizing reduced amount of impervious surfaces.
Gino, what do you think?
I, I'm sorry, uh, could you, could, Frank, could you repeat that?
Yes, so under number nine, buildings, principal facade and parking, so currently it says parking shall be subordinate in design. And location to the principal building facade, I'm suggesting we add the following words. While prioritizing reduced amount of impervious surfaces.
Sure, yeah, can do that.
We talked about, uh, reducing perv- pervious surfaces in other places, and here we're specifically talking about parking and the. Highlight the principal building versus the parking, so I think that also trying to reduce the amount of impervious surface would be good.
Frank, you've got so great on us, anything else, what, um, anything else on seven? Page seven, alright. Um, page eight. Um, item three.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm just on seven for a second, sorry, that purpose part, was that, did that come straight from the state?
Where are we?
The, one that you were just talking about, that number one purpose on page seven.
No.
Is that something that we drafted?
Um, I think that was, I think the consultant put that in, Gino?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
This seems like.
Yeah, it's.
It's sort of, um.
Yeah.
An implied something. It's very sloppy, and it's like.
I know, that's why I wanted to clean it up a little bit.
Yeah.
Um, under affordability requirements, all affordable units created in the. M O D under this section must be eligible for listing on blah blah blah, so here I'd like to strike affordable. To housing, love eighty percent, you know, basically, we're referencing the state law, so I think we can get rid of that line, and then I'd like. Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, I like that spelled out. Is that okay with the board?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Um, under five, seven, nine, site plan review. Um, item two, as part of any application for site plan review for a project within the M O D. Um, submitted on this section, blah, 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 and then in parentheses, or for projects not requiring site plan review before submission. I wanna strike that whole parentheses, because I want everything to have a site plan review. Thoughts, Gino?
Yeah, I, I, I think it makes sense.
Okay, in other words, I, I think we need to look at every project, shop is not gonna be a project that we're gonna look at. Perhaps you okay with that?
Um. It says, show is required for any multifamily. I know we changed it before, because the wording implied it was for any project, including like an individual home. But now I think it's too loose, cause part one says it's required for any multifamily projects. It's conceivable, you could have a mixed use. Project that only has a single unit, residential unit in it. And that would still be a valid mixed use, so maybe it should say, site plan review is required for any multifamily project or.
Or mixed use.
Or mixed use project.
Yeah, that, that's a great point.
That is a very, yeah. Okay, good catch, any other thoughts on this page?
Yeah.
Ladies and gentlemen?
Yes.
You do, go ahead.
So, uh, going back to, uh, number four, point four provisions of affordable housing. Uh, you went from point five and above to point four of below for a rounding.
Yep.
What happens if it's between point four and point five? Should it be four, 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 point four and nine? Just as, just as.
Okay, let me see, to calculate affordable.
Then what happens?
It, it should say fractional units of less than point five.
Yes.
You use that word as well?
You got that, Gino?
Yeah.
And then the other thing is, we, we, you didn't want to use the wording, and so we use wording for the mass state law for affordable housing, and here we got the eighty percent again. So shouldn't that be referred to the, uh, mass state law as opposed to the, uh, eighty percent of A M I? So it's getting that eighty percent, you know, we took eighty percent out earlier on, should we not take it out here and just refer to, uh. Households earning at the level of.
Yeah, that, that, I, that's a good point, we should again reference that. The affordable units must be eligible for listing on the subsidized housing inventory, and then that has all the rules. Cause it's more than just eighty percent of A M I, there's, there are other rules too.
Yep.
And that way, if those rules change, it doesn't render these incorrect.
Yep, correct.
A good one then? You guys heard a good one then?
Alright, you guys okay with page eight? Alright, page nine. Under item three, timeline, the site line, site line review should be commenced no later than thirty days, well. Um, we're gonna change that to forty five, only because, let's say, there's a project and it's in July. And it gets presented before us, two days before our meeting in July, that means we have to have a special meeting. To, to beat our deadline before August, and everyone's going on vacation, so I asked, Gino, what do you think about changing it to thirty to forty five? And that way, um, because if something comes before us, we're gonna have to spend some time on it.
Yeah, I agree.
Is that alright with everyone?
Given our ability to change that, not a state.
Nope, I asked. Okay. Um, so Gino, we'll, we'll clean this up, obviously, there's enough changes, I do not wanna vote on it, because it would be sloppy. So if we can get this, and we'll put it on the agenda for a month from now, that still gives us plenty of time. And then the next timeline, and Gino and I were talking about this, typically. These things are a work in progress, um, this has to go to the state. It has to go, we have to have a hearing, and it has to go to town council, but I think the state is gonna be the ultimate. It's gonna be their decision, whether or not we've changed something that shouldn't be changed, or that we're missing something, even though we, we worked with, um, a consultant. So my thought was, um, get this cleaned up, vote on it next meeting, submit it to the state. For, for their review, and then at that point, um, send it to town council. And then get it back before our hearing, um, Gino, what do you think about that timeline?
Sounds good.
Is the board okay with that? Um, and again, normally, we, this, here's an extra step, but I do, I don't wanna to go to town council and have the state go, no, 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 we want this in. That work? Will, does that work? Does that make sense to you guys?
Just a good point here, it's a real easy one, Gino, the, the very last item. There's a typo, it says five dot one dot ten, it's five dot seven dot ten.
Yeah, that's right.
I, I just wanna say one thing, I think the purpose sections are actually really important. Because down the line, when we could have a completely different board. That's sort of what informs the future of what sentiment behind all this was. And so we have, I actually think the first purpose for multi overly district is fairly tight, in terms of saying. What this is trying to do, and then the affordable housing one. I much, I, it, it seems repetitive, and also sort of how. Is that different or adding to, and I wonder if we could just next time, think about and take a look at trying to make. Sure that those are, it seems like fluff now, but I think it's gonna be really important later, so it's sort of like, and.
So.
It's our message to the future.
Are you suggesting a change to, are you talking five, seven, one?
I'm talking five, seven, eight, I think five, seven, one captures the purpose of the multifamily overlay district. Well, I think five, seven, eight sort of says the same thing again, but under the title of affordability. Which there's, I, I'm not sure it needs to be separated out, and if it does, I think we should address the affordability piece. Really specifically or something, but also like, I agree with you on part A, and I also think part B says the same thing in a different way. And I, I think, if I was looking at this ten years from now, going, what? What are we trying to do here? But the affordability there was added, was allowed after the fact by the state, this was not the state's original. Exactly, exactly. But for us as a town, we've been. It's important to us as a town, so. I just wanna give it some thought, so that it really captures why it's important to us as a town, so it communicates clearly to our future boards.
Okay.
What they wanna keep central to our mission.
Okay. Alright, so, um. We'll clean this up, and hopefully, next time we'll go through it much quicker, I'd still like to go line by line. Um, next time, and then we'll, we'll vote to accept it, um. With, with, with the understanding that it's probably gonna be changed, but. Is that okay with the board? Alright, we'll work on that for next meeting.
Update.
Um, sure, um, when, when I was, you want, is there any news, did you talk, have a chance to talk to Sean about that?
Um, I guess it needs to, I mean, there's, the thing is, I guess there is a crosswalk there. There's an existing crosswalk, I guess that was unclear from the last, what I was brought up, but there's. Um.
Yeah, the, the proposal, and I, it's my fault, I just talked about the crosswalk project, so I remembered I talked about it to Chris, and I even talked to everybody. But there's an existing crosswalk, the proposal was to put pedestrian controlled lights on it, like in the center.
So, um, I mean, I think there's, you know, definitely a case to be made, but it's a dangerous crosswalk, it's an existing walk, and. Should probably be approved, um, it was, it did, uh, traffic safety committee, then. I mean, it, it, it would be a joint effort, and it's part of the planning board. Um, we can look at it, and there's a number of areas where like de-schooling. If not a crosswalk, there are a lot of people cross there, I guess there's a number of other places in town, we have crosswalks set. We have to, would bring the line, considering, um. It, it, yeah, no, I, you know, I don't know as far as, you know, finding funding for.
Well, I, I'm not worried about funding, I'm, I'm thinking right now, um.
Also prioritization, prioritizing, like, I mean, it should be traffic safety looking at, at that, I think, at the planning board, we certainly recommend that, that.
Okay, so.
Something that should be looked at.
So, so this is what I was thinking, and, and I've gone back and forth a little bit on it, this is gonna tie into my next discussion. Um, I'd like to say, and, and I know Sean's not gonna like it, um. I know we could get it, I know, I could say, um. Advisory would be okay with it, select board would be okay with it, we said, we have fifty thousand dollars coming to us. From the special permit money, so that means we'd have an article for. from the special permit money, so that means we'd have an article for the spring saying, we wanna see a lighted crosswalk, we would like to see money set aside for potentially a traffic study, and I'm gonna get to that in a second, um, and then additional police details for the rest of the money for Coolidge and Western have. Put that together as a warrant article for that money that's coming from the DESA. So that, that's the question really for the board. And that's not a discussion we have to have tonight, that's a discussion that we have to sort of work on, to think about it for town meeting. Because the, the, the money, the DESA money would only, we would have access to it through town meeting, but, um, I would like to see a, a lighted crosswalk, I'd like to see lots of lighted crosswalks, but we have to start somewhere, and I think that's a good place to begin, um, cars are building up steam, and, and the sightlines aren't great, and so if you have a blinking light, um, it's gonna, it's gonna draw people's attention. And, um, so, we can continue this discussion, but that's how I would approach it.
Chris, just to clarify, you're suggesting that this crosswalk, uh, would be grouped with a traffic study and police details in a, in a warrant article for the spring?
Yeah. I'm not saying it's gonna happen, I'm saying that's a discussion for the board as far as how, how we wanna approach, basically, this is gonna be fifty thousand dollars used for traffic calming, traffic safety, and.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know, it, it, well, we can discuss this, you know, this is definitely, I mean, as far as you know, shared streets and things, if we wanted to look for, look townwide at, you know, at, you know, think about from a planning point of how, you know, doing some kind of view of, it may be in conjunction with traffic safety committee, of how many crosswalks do we have that? Cause there are, there's, there's a shared street, right, which is different than complete streets, which this type of thing actually is appropriate for, and, um, but it would require, you, you wouldn't wanna just look at one intersection, I think we should be looking a little more holistically, but, um, I don't know, has the side of help, maybe reached out to traffic safety at all, or have they?
They, they've, they've reached out, yeah, um.
And, and maybe it's a joint discussion, or maybe.
Yeah, and, and it's gonna be hard to pick winners and losers, right? And, and as my least, one of my least favorite presidents, Bill Clinton, said, just because you can't do everything, never make that an excuse for doing nothing. So, so, so we have, we have to start, we have to start somewhere, and I, and I think that would be, um, beneficial to everybody in that neighborhood, and it's not just because you're sitting next to me.
But that would, it certainly makes sense, I mean, having an existing crosswalk that's clearly, um, that's, you know, it's already there, it's already got landing at that other side, it's just, it's dangerous, and that's a good place to start, and I guess thinking of, there must be, I'm sure it's not the only one, there might be a couple others, a handful, but just, um, doing some kind of help.
Yeah, and I think it's a pretty significant one, I mean, clearly, I'd say the most important one in all towns, one by Pilgrim Church, that is used a ton.
Yep, and there is one there.
There, there is, uh, pedestrian control things there, but, you know, side hall, that's, that's twenty houses, I see people use it routinely because the side hall sidewalk only goes to the other side of twenty-seven, it doesn't go anywhere else, so people use it quite a bit, there's quite limited sight distance for the southbound cars, they come around the curve and they're right on top of it in another hundred yards or so.
So, I don't know, that, I mean, it's not necessarily saying not to look at side rail, I think what she's saying is us to a little bit larger, look at it, uh, the other potential dangerous ones as well, and maybe lump them together and prioritize them, you know, which one to do first, second, third, and side rail might be the first one, and then we have a few others on the list already, a little bit like the, um, complete street fire organization plan that we put together.
Yep. And hey, but this, but this isn't the first time we've talked about a lighted crosswalk there, um, but we will continue on and we'll move forward. Um, it would be great if we could get it done in the spring, um.
How excessive is a lighted crosswalk?
I think.
The one at Pilgrim, especially when it was done, was about twelve thousand.
So it's like fifteen, right?
Some of it, the, the, the light, the, the one that was done over at, um, where it wasn't on a, it's always just how it's posted, how the posted amount is, so the one at Pilgrim is a much more substantial posted amount, the one that's over by Fessin and Pleasant Street, that was, um, timed two, two years ago, it's about six thousand, that's just on a street light, and now that's just a you know, two by two, whatever post, so it, it all depends on how it's set up.
And also the electricity has to get to it.
Of course.
Electricity to, or is it?
Well, they're solar.
They're solar.
Um, I don't think, yeah, they're both sold, they have a backup battery in there, both, both of them are solar.
Okay, I mean, I don't know whether it's wired or wireless, but they communicate with each other, so you press the button on one side and both sets of lights start flashing.
Yes, I think it's a sensor.
Yeah, it's probably wireless, I, I will note that the, for those people who like to use the Holliston rail trail, they've had those for a while, for the trail across those roads, and I think fairly recently, they upgraded them, so they're now auto triggered by photo cells, so if you're just proceeding along the trail, the light starts blinking before you get to the curb, you know, had to press the button.
Okay, um, the roundabout is moving forward, it looks like things are gonna fall to place. Um, so what I wanna ask Frank to do is between now and summertime, um, let's look at, um, and you may have done it in the past, but let's look at, um, traffic studies that were done in the past between, um, the split that's in front of my house down at Dell's Corner, and what I would like to see is, I'd like to see when the roundabout gets completed, to then look at the traffic and, and its impact on the traffic, and, and let's start thinking about recommendations for, um, a split to Dell's Corner with the anticipation of a lot more housing going in in midfield, and, uh, so let's not wait until, you know, it gets out of control, if we can, and, and there's, there's a lot of plans in the planning office, a lot of people have looked at it.
Yeah, Gina's giving me some also, so I have to, yeah, start looking at that.
And then, and then in the sometime in the spring, when you think you're, you're ready to chat about it, um, we'll, we'll give you the floor, is that okay with the board?
Gina, the, um, complete street prioritization plan that we did, we must have been working on that in two thousand sixteen, but it was finalized in two thousand seventeen. That was like a phase one of complete streets, and I know we don't have any more complete streets funds that we can tap into for at least another year, but is there, um, I don't know, I mean, in two thousand seventeen, is, is there, do you have any thoughts on a process for revisiting that, for prioritization plan or updating it, or?
Yes, in fact, uh, I think it was Frank, right, this, didn't you work on, uh, on an update of that plan? Cause we, we took out the ones, the projects that were completed or in the works, and, and, uh, and, and moved some things around, so, so there is a draft of a update of that plan.
Is it just a draft spreadsheet, or, I mean, are we, what's that, narrative, or I guess I'm just thinking of something.
Just some kind of a spreadsheet.
Okay.
Yeah, and we need to be submitted to, to MassDOT for, you know, approval, but, I mean, wh- once it's finalized, so, so yeah, it's kind of underway.
Okay, well, that's.
I think it's a question of adding anything to, I mean, we're, we've been editing as far as what's been done and maybe shifting priorities, but do you think there's anything that has changed enough in town that would be worth adding that maybe wasn't added in two thousand seventeen?
Oh, so I mean, we, we, we could, off the top of my head, I don't, I, I can't think of anything without looking at the, what's already on the list, but.
I, I would say let's get through town meeting, and let's put that on the agenda where we can sit down, pull the whole plan out, and, and almost do a, a working meeting when we look at it.
Yeah, we could take the browser.
Yeah, yeah, alright, um, does anyone have anything else to report?
What's the update on the town plan?
Um, interviews have happened, and right now it's up to, um, it's in the hands of the select board's office. So hopefully we'll be moving forward, um, I'm happy with how it's going, um, I've been asked my opinion, and quite honestly, I have no opinion other than I like the person. So, um, the rest of it is outside of my control. Can we just move to the board?
I have a couple of real quick reports, motherboards. Yeah, I had the, um, MWRTA board meeting yesterday, and they're going over their financials, um, I don't know how the heck they did this, but they're always talking about how underfunded they are, and they, you know, between the tiny fares and the assessments of the towns, they, they don't cover all their expenses, and they get some money from the state, but they're always scrounging around for other things, and their state assistance last year was three point five million, and they got the state to up it to nine million, nine point three million state contract assistance this year, big country, paying down some of their debt, um, getting some more vehicles, so very impressive lobbying must have gone on there. Um, the other thing is, you know, I've talked about, I'm with a solo group of trails activists who are looking at, and, you know, kinda lobbying the state about the rail trail, and, um, I wasn't able to make it to the last land activist meeting, but appeared at that, you know, on the select board, it's like, yeah, that's great, but I don't know how you're gonna get the money for purchasing the land, don't come to town meeting looking for it, and the state like, uh, Mass Trail says it's fantastic, and we have tons of money available for doing engineering and, um, construction, but there is an expectation that local communities get control of property first, so no real progress there, but some of the people did come up with a very nice little flyer, I don't know if anybody wants to see it, it's, uh.
Can we keep these?
If you want.
You have one for me?
Yeah.
Who else?
Do you have another one?
Alright.
So the, the front page is supposed to be like, the back page is what it's kind of like, looks like now, except there's also, you can't even see there's rails on it also. And the front page is that's like, turned into a combination, you know, wildlife and stormwater retention basin.
Alright, anything else to report? Um.
Has your been any more discussion with the R cap?
No, there's, there's sort of, we keep trying to push the state to say the state should go in and deal with CSX as a whole, tell them this is everything we want, and I guess the one way the Framingham people are talking about leveraging it is if they buy the CSX yard up in Framingham, they see that as it could do great things for some flooding problems in Framingham, so there might be um, stormwater associated money available to actually do that. Um, the, the one other thing I was just gonna mention was, um, I hadn't known about it before, but I know there's this push going on with the conservation organizations and trustees to buy the farm down by Millis, Mill, Mill Warren Farm. Um, just wondered if people, just thought people should know about that, they're trying to raise money for it, um, seemed like, they seem to think they have to make a deal by the end of the year, and, um, I, I believe at least some of the property is under chapter sixty-one or was, so I don't know exactly what that means, but, you know, presumably the town is not interested in stepping forward on that if the trustees are.
Yeah.
So, it's a hundred and eighty acres, it's a big property.
Alright, so anyone have any questions? Does anyone have anything else they'd like to bring up? Alright, um, before we leave, please sign that, and I'll deliver copies on Thursday, um, is there any other business, Gina, do you have anything else?
I don't have anything else.
Alright. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I may.
Second? Second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Alright, everyone, have a great evening.